Silence your mobile telephone so we won't have ringing disturbing our speakers. At this time, we're going to call the meeting to order and like to have a motion on the minutes from our prior meeting. Anyone like to make a motion to approve?
I'd like to approve the motion of the minutes from November nineteenth. Oh, sorry. I'd like to approve the motion to, I would like to approve the minutes for November nineteenth. Can you hear me now?
Okay.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, right hand. It's unanimous. Okay, at this time, we'll turn it over to our planning department for our new business.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. I'd like to briefly take a moment to introduce our newest staff member within the planning department. Matt Ward joins us from Richmond, Virginia, where he spent most of his career. Matt had a desire to move back closer to family and he's excited about the opportunity and we're thrilled to have him in the role as senior planner.
Welcome.
Welcome.
And then if I may, Mr. Chairman, proceed with our first agenda item.
Sure.
Our first case for tonight is zoning and comp plan amendment 2019-0090. This parcel is a 5.6 acre parcel off of Highway seventy-four, Independence Boulevard, and Plowar Road. The current zoning is SF1, single-family, low-density residential. And the applicant is proposing to rezone to Regional Business District, also known as RBD. The Regional Business District is a designated zoning for the seventy-four corridor. The future land use is currently traditional neighborhood development and the proposed future land use is mixed use. The property owner does not have current plans for the property at this time but intends to market the property and feels they are unable to do so with the current SF1 and the proximity to seventy-four. You'll see before you the aerial map with the property highlighted with a yellow star. This is photo of the existing site looking northeast along Plowar. The property is on your left. And you'll see highlighted in red, the existing zoning of SF1 in the beige with the light purplish-blue surrounding it is the RBD for the seventy-four corridor. Future zoning map here displays that traditional neighborhood development which is, could be also high-density residential is somewhat of the traditional neighborhood development. And then we have before you tonight the requested action. So this includes a comprehensive plan amendment as well as the rezoning. So we have to get the future land use map to match the proposed zoning. But in an effort to simplify the voting process, with approval from the town attorney, we're asking for just one vote on each of the items. So one vote on the comprehensive plan amendment and one vote on the rezoning, whereas before we've been doing the dual votes. But the town attorney is okay at the planning board level with that being simplified. And I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Now, they want to rezone the area. Is it residential? I'm still understanding it. Is it residential right now?
Correct, SF1.
What businesses are they planning on putting there?
Well, as previously noted, the property owner doesn't have any current plans for the property at this time but would like to market it and feels they can't market it with its proximity to seventy-four. You're not going to get low-density residential right off of seventy-four.
This face is right on Plowar Road? Does it join it?
Correct. We can go back and take a look at the map. You can see it's just about about seventy-four, but frontage on Plowar.
Any other presentation from the staff?
That's all.
Okay, so at this time, we need to make a vote on it?
If there's any public comment and then the applicant may wish to speak.
Yeah, we didn't have public comment on this one, this item, so.
Okay. Is the applicant here?
The applicant may wish to speak.
Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Board members. My name is Tom Crouch. I'm one of the project managers at the Moses Group. Thank you for allowing me to come speak on this 319 Plowar Road rezoning. We've been discussing this property internally for some time now with the hopes of being sensitive to the property surrounding it and it being a visual gateway into Indian Trail. As you know, this parcel is currently zoned to single-family residential. With so many townhomes and apartments already in the pipeline for Indian Trail, we would like to rezone it to regional business in order to be more consistent with surrounding parcels and be viewed more favorably by potential buyers or developers. For this reason, we are asking you to support the request to rezone it to Regional Business District. Thank you. I'll be happy to answer any questions now.
What businesses are there now?
Right now, there's a single-family house that has been a bit run down and abandoned and their windows are actually bolted up.
That's not on the property, though?
That is on the property right now, yes, ma'am.
Okay, so will you purchase that property, that goes?
We have not demoed it yet and we do own the property right now, but it will go, yes, ma'am.
So what I'm saying, besides that, what else is on the property? Like what other businesses are around there?
On the property, there are no other businesses around there.
It's just all land.
If you go back to that one picture.
Because I see this, yeah.
If you go back one. So the two parcels directly across, one is an office building, the Keller Williams office building. The one directly beside that is a garage, an auto garage right there.
Okay. And so there's nothing else around there that will impede on having the businesses there?
No, ma'am.
You say, oh, you would say, oh, okay.
Any other questions? Ready to vote? Okay, do we have a motion?
I'm motioning to recommend approval of CPA 2019-0091 petition as presented.
I'll second it.
All in favor, raise your right hand. It's unanimous, so it passes. Thank you.
No, no, we still got to do another part, right?
Okay.
We still got to do motion to, right?
Sorry, you got the comprehensive plan amendment and then the rezoning.
Okay.
So one more vote, if you don't mind.
Okay, do we have a motion?
I want to motion it. Okay, I motion to recommend, am I reading the second one right? Because you know me, I'm always doing it wrong. I motion to recommend approval of the Z, CZ219-0091 petition with additional conditions. Did I do that right?
And we have a.
I second the motion.
That would be as presented unless you're recommending conditions.
As presented.
Second motion. Okay, we have a motion and we have a second. All in favor, right hand? It's unanimous?
Thank you.
Next up, ZM and CPA 2019-00, excuse me, CZ CPA 2019-0106 Chestnut Parkway Townhomes.
Good evening, Planning Commission and members of the audience. This request is rezone nine point one-one acres from single-family one, low-density residential, and Union County residential R10 to conditional zoning mixed-use development. Additional request is to also amend the comprehensive plan from parks and old Chestnut Parkway alignment to mixed-use. Chestnut Parkway Townhomes and Commercial Plan is comprised of seven parcels totaling nine point one-one acres. Two existing single-family dwellings are on the site and will be removed with this development. Development includes ninety-three three-story, for-sale townhomes with two-car garages and a two-story commercial building. Adequate parking has been provided. The entire residential portion will have three hundred and seventy-two parking spaces, which will include four parking spaces per unit, which will be on the driveway. And then Commercial Development have sixty-five parking spaces, which exceeds the UDA requirement of forty-six spaces. The schematic landscape plan that you see in front of you illustrates the opportunity to be, to have trees placed in between the driveways, along the streets, and throughout the parking areas. This is the commercial component over here, which you can see, it's a two-story building. Also, the existing mature trees are here along the Fisher property, the industrial site to the north, and then it kind of curves up here. You've got some trees, existing standard trees that should remain in place. Architectural renderings show a three-story building. Exterior portions of the building will include a brick base reaching the second floor and some of the areas. And the upper floors will have berry colors of hardy plank and the pitch roofs, as you see, with the different colors. Additional features include some detailed window framing, shutters, brick and stone soldier courses, and some covered entrance ways. And these are the pieces of property that we're talking about. We've got one piece here that's in Union County that will have to be annexed in as part of this. This gives you an idea of where we are. Town Hall is kind of off the map over here. Carolina Court's here. And so the project will be coming in where we see these standard trees. And your existing zoning here has got single-family as well as RBD to the right, so all this will be going into the mixed-use district for future zoning. Even though the proposed plan for the mixed-use is not consistent with our downtown plan, in the Towns Conference of Plans, staff supports this request because it is consistent with the business commercial development occurring in this area of the downtown. All review agencies provided feedback and will continue providing review comments during the site plan process. The Union County Sheriff's Division did mention parking concerns and the HOA will be responsible for painting any on-street parking spaces that are required by the current parking ordinance. On January eighth, a community meeting was held. We had one in attendance, one citizen who was in support of the project. He did have a concern, you know, with the future occupants being, you know, questionable about living beside industrial use, but we assured him that it should be a non-issue. The industrial use has existed there. It's been, he's been a good neighbor. It's a nice building and the future homeowners realize there's a required existing buffer that's to remain in place as a separation between the two uses. So that would only change if the use of his industrial building were to change, and that's something the planning department would handle. Staff has provided additional comments, their standard, as well as, you know, additional per this request, but staff continues to support the request as it meets the goals and objectives of the comprehensive plan. And with this plan amendment, it'll blend with the recently approved conditional zoning for the hub. And this concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions, as you have any of me. You've got the applicant's engineer, Matthew Kirchner of Eagle Engineering, should you need to talk to him.
Okay, any questions? One concern I have is go over who was concerned about the number of parking spaces. Was it the fire department?
It was the Sheriff's Division. They were concerned about on-street parking because, you know, when you have visitors coming into these townhome developments, you know, we all have guests or family coming over. He just wants to make sure they have on-street parking striped in some of the areas and it may just be certain designated treats.
Mm-hmm.
But you do have two-car garages and then it's going to be able to accommodate four cars on those driveways.
Question? Yeah, I'm sorry. Can we refer back to that and correct me if I misheard, but there's a part of this that's going to need to be annexed by Union County?
Yeah, I'll show you the aerial here. It's this kind of piece here, it's not shaded. That's Union County spot.
Has that traditionally been an issue?
Should be streamlined.
Just curious, more or less, okay.
Is it like a doughnut hole?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Any other questions? Okay, if we'd like to hear from the applicant.
I think they're.
We have to wait, ma'am, until, until we.
What's the impact on schools? Did y'all do that, a study?
Yes.
I looked at something, but I think my notes kind of got mixed up when it came in the mail, so.
No, you're correct. We're required to send it to Union County schools and they did provide comment back to us. Said it would yield four students. And then, of course, the Board of Education always reserves the right to come in and, you know, provide, I guess, extra requirements if needed.
Well, I'm trying to figure out how, what gave them that prediction? Yeah.
We have to be quiet out in the audience right now, please.
Ma'am, I'm sorry. Sorry, please.
Thank you.
We're going to give you your time, sweetie. What, where did they get this from? What made them possess? I work for Sun Valley, I work, I'm a teacher at Sun Valley High School, so I'm just curious. Where is that coming from?
The applicant has to, right, they reserve the right to work with someone of their choice, so it's Union County looks at it as well, but they hired a consultant to review the numbers.
That, well, the project, what is it designed to? The purpose of the, I guess, I'll wait for him to come, but I guess, I guess as he comes up, my question to him would be, who are you marketing? Is it fifty-five and older? And that's what makes you get the four, you know what I mean? So he can answer that when he comes, but I guess that would be my question. Who is he marketing?
That's a good question.
Okay. Because that doesn't make any sense, there's no way. It's going to be four students.
I'm just curious, I mean, there's a lot of density here in a small area. I don't see a lot of landscaping in it. That's one of my concerns. The architecture of it, the backside of it looks, I'm assuming that's the backside I'm looking at that looks really pretty plain. That's my concerns, but.
This is the backside you're looking at here and then that will be the front load. They're kind of, if you want to envision like kind of alley-loaded in a way, you're not going to see this until you go into the development.
So that's hidden?
Yeah.
Curb appeal is something I'm concerned about.
This is what you'll see from Chestnut Parkway.
If you guys want, I have a presentation that I've prepared to show you too that might answer some of these questions.
Okay.
Okay.
I don't know if it's going to be to fix the school part, though, but I'm definitely.
That's because all day, it's four, it's four students per unit.
Okay.
So for every townhome, this is where they're going to go.
Are we at this point ready for the presentation?
Yes, I am.
Okay, if you'd like to do your presentation now. While we're getting ready, just to let you guys know, we're the, we're the planning board, we're volunteers here in the town. We all live here, we work here, we're strictly volunteers, so we want it to be, whatever we put in this town, to be good for the people here in the town, so. And just don't clap, please. Let's hold it, hold it down, please, but thank you.
Hello, everyone. I'm Matthew Kircher with Eagle Engineering. I'm part of the engineering staff here. I have the development team here as well for you guys to talk to. Thank you, Chairman and Planning Board, as well as staff for their presentation, community members that came out to speak. So I might have to hold this, let's see. This is better, everybody can.
A little bit louder, please.
A little bit louder, okay. I'm here to talk about Chestnut Parkway mixed-use development here in Knights. Staff will have it, I'll just kind of go over it and they have some little more information for you guys to have. This is an overview of where we're at. Chestnut Parkway here, your new swim club over here. This is the new, I apologize that you guys are looking at your screens and I only have one laser pointer to point in the back here. Town Hall is, is right here. The new apartments and hotel site is right up at the front. This kind of shows you what is there existing now. If you're looking out, it's on that side of the Town Hall, if you're going out that way, just off Chestnut. You can pretty much see it from this area. These are existing photos and then again, just kind of an overview of where you're at. I kind of zoomed out on this one. Town Hall here, the parks, swim club, hub, seventy-four along the road here, just kind of giving you an idea of where the project is. Existing zoning right now is single-family with the downtown overlay around it, and so that kind of brings into the points that we're bringing in that it kind of makes sense of what your future planning has here. These next two slides is the future plan that you have. You can tell here, the commercial piece doesn't show, but the townhome piece here, all the rest of the parks and the swim club, the apartments, it comes out of here, guys, is future use plan the town has put together. The second slide here, just zoomed in, I know the light rail has been a big talking point to showing you that there is room on the front. There's already easement in place for light rail when it does come in, so this, again, part of the future use plan of Indian Trail. This is the color rendering, it gives you a little bit more idea than the black and white that you see on there. Townhome community here on the front, commercial kicked over here on the side. This is a stormwater management pond, so in the impervious that we're adding, we're detaining, controlling the water, cleaning it before it discharges on the site, but it kind of gives you a good border of what we're looking at here. Well, I'm going to show you the elevations. If you look at this front row here on Chestnut Parkway, these are all rear-loaded townhomes and everything else are front-loaded townhomes, so I'll try to explain the two elevations that you're seeing. You kind of remember everything on Chestnut Parkway are rear-loaded, everything on the rest of it is, or sorry, everything on Chestnut Parkway is rear-loaded and everything on the rest of it is your normal front-loaded townhomes. This is kind of the mini center that we have here, again, the pond with the benches and the fountain, the sidewalks around, you know, trying to build that community right across from the parks that they can get across, even the Town Hall can come across, going over to the commercial site and the ideas that we have over there. First elevation, this again is that rear-loaded product, so this is what you would see on Chestnut Parkway. So you're going to see no driveways on the front, no parking. When you drive down Chestnut Parkway, you're just going to see the front interiors like you're shown here. This would be the rear units. This is internal to the subdivision. You would get the, your normal look on the, on the front-load townhomes with these elevations here. These are three-story-high, three-bedroom, twenty-one to twenty-three hundred square feet, starting price in the three hundreds. Here is the commercial building that we saw there. Again, it's going to be a flex space, seventy-two to fourteen, four hundred square feet. Again, multiple ideas here, but we're leaving it as a flex space. I think CBD is the uses that we're going to put together on it, if you have that list kind of have on there, but even a restaurant, office space, and then kind of have there that you can, again, get to the parks, go to a game, come across the street, have some dinner, anything like that. This is your actual hard rezoning plan that has all the details on it, parking, unit sizes, trees, and everything else that's being requested on there. I think this is my last slide here. So if you guys have any questions, I'd be more than happy to flip through the slides and see if there's anything I can answer for you.
Questions?
Yeah, I have a question. Just out of curiosity, the marketability of your project as it kind of comes right up to the hub that's being built, do you have any concerns about you guys? I understand apartments versus townhomes, I get that, but do you have any concerns about, you know, the, the kind of competition there?
I think these two projects of what you're seeing, if you've seen any other townhome products come in, I think there's access to the high-end apartments that are going with the high-end townhomes. You won't see many three-story townhomes starting in the three hundred thousand dollar range in the area. So these are high-end townhomes that they're providing in this area to kind of, to meet that need and match the rest of the quality that the towns have proved to come in.
And what was the average square foot?
Twenty-one to twenty-three hundred square feet.
And do you have any, any idea of the commercial building that you're talking about there? I understand you said flex space. So I understand there's not a brand name with it, but I mean, what is your vision for that? Is that whoever, whoever brings the check and.
It really comes down to with the parks and stuff coming across and the swim club going in, you'd like to see that restaurant or something coming on one part of it and then maybe some office space on the, the upper floors that kind of opens up to whatever they need, especially with the apartments there. It gives them options of what it can be. I mean, it could even be a small shop shorefront that's selling athletic clothes to the people that are at the parks or the swim club, so it's really open range of what ideas that, that people can bring in.
So my only concern, and this is just me more voicing it, okay, is, I'm not trying to quote-unquote beat a dead horse, but one of our biggest concerns with the hub was parking. And now I'm hearing that there might be a slight concern about parking with this project.
I'm glad you brought that up. Current requirements is two hundred and thirty-three parking spots. We've provided three hundred and seventy-two parking spots. That's an additional hundred and thirty-nine above the requirements for parking. So if there's any parking issues here, we're well over and beyond it. And that's to say, there's a crazy party going, there is off-stream, on-street parking on Chestnut Parkway to.
We heard people at the hub say the same thing.
Even without that, almost a third increase of parking on-site for everybody. So it's an extra hundred and thirty-nine parking spots for the residential for ninety-three units.
My concern with the parking, especially when you address the street parking, is one, you're, you have the sports complex, you have the football stadium, you're going to have the swim club, you're going to have the light rail station, you're going to have all the children and that live in the hub apartments, you're going to have, I'm sure there're going to be maybe four children that live in this project. Sorry, I don't mean to make a joke. But, you know, that's, that's a lot of foot traffic, especially when you have cars coming in and out, coming out of the apartments, coming out of your townhomes, coming to do business in Town Hall, coming over to the sports complex, going through the light rail station, you have children, adults, I mean, these are kind of things, you know, and I understand you're not worried about the hub necessarily, you're worried about your project, but just as in general terms, you know, that's, that's a big, a little bit of a concern.
Again, that's, that's why we went over and beyond on the parking. We made sure we had the extra width and you'll see the, the standard detail for the streets. We've actually worked with the town to push that sidewalk next to the curb to make sure there's a full two lengths of cars that can fit in for the extra parking. Even with this, when you're talking about ninety-three units compared to three hundred and fifty apartments, you're kind of jammed in that one spot, so there's over and beyond parking and space available if they need it.
I just didn't want everyone to be concerned, you know, hey, the street.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, there's only so much street.
There's only so much street. That's why we tried to push to over and beyond to add extra parking on-site.
All right, thank you.
Other questions?
Did you get my questions from before about the school? Like, how did you get that?
It's a third-party representative that Union County provided for us. We reached out, said we need a school study. They reached back. It's four unit, four students per unit is what they, they came back to have.
Four students per unit, but you said it's only four kids coming to the school?
No, no, not four. That's what, I didn't say that.
It was a mistake.
The town, I think it was a mis-type on the.
Mis-type, oh, okay.
Yeah, so it's not us that actually do it. It's Union County recommended, some people that do school, school study for them, and we just hired them to provide that information to us.
Okay, so it's not four students coming to the school?
No, it's four.
They're saying it's four?
It's four per townhome, so you've got ninety-three townhomes, there's four towns, ninety-three.
Okay. Who are you marketing to? Because now, this is three, this is three-bedroom homes.
And when you have that, you've got the new hospital right across the street and where you have, you're feeding a lot at the hospital, doctors coming in, needing places to stay. This is within a couple of minutes of the new hospital and the new parcels and buildings that are right there in that area.
Okay. I mean, it sounds nice, but is it, I'm just thinking about the, the area, is it going to be, I mean, I know that right now it doesn't seem like it's anything there and it doesn't seem like the traffic. I mean, I know traffic comes through there, but like, what is going to bring people in a community, like especially if you want to have a restaurant, what's going to attract them? Like, because right now, it's like, my thing is you put it there and then, then you get slow business, you know what I mean? And people are not interested, no longer live in there.
For, for living there itself, again, the hospital's not going to go. When they're making an investment like that, that business and people living in the area is going to be there, but the town itself just spent a ton of money on a new turf field right outside and all the parks and stuff they put in place, with all the events and everything they have there, whether people live in there or not, the, the commercial piece itself will be self-sufficient all by itself. And again, you've got three hundred and fifty apartments that are going to have hungry people in it as well, looking for a place to go and shop and eat. I don't know the commercial piece by itself is, is going to have any issues getting people into it with the amount of services you guys have provided in the area.
What would be the driving market, I guess, if I, because some people might not, might look at it and say, well, it's a townhouse, I don't want to live in a townhouse, I prefer to buy a single-family house. Like, what is the, what, how do you think that's going to affect the sale of your townhouse? If people. People, people might say, I don't want no, I'm not going to spend all this money on the town so I can get a house for that mount with a yard and...
Everybody wants something different. And this is the downtown look that Indian Trail's requesting to put in with your future plan. Not everybody wants to take care of a yard. And this is an HOA maintained, so your yard's not taken care of. You come home, work, live, downtown area, you park, you walk, go to the parks, go to the swim club. You're, you're out and about trying to build that real downtown area look.
Other questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I've got two questions for staff. The three-story condos, do we require sprinkler systems?
That's going to be something Union County building inspections would, that's their purview.
I will note, we will meet all state and local codes during this build. I, I can tell you for townhomes, it doesn't require they have firewalls in between units. Commercial buildings is usually where you, you see that in there, but we will meet all local and state.
Well, my concern is the, the third, third story and children being in on the third floor in case there's a fire in them. And that's my, my concern there. And then my second question is the light rail, what is our timetable on that? I mean, I know a lot of people, some people may be looking at a condo here and maybe not even own a car. Maybe just get on a light rail in the morning and go to work and come back, especially with the new medical complex coming up the street.
Sure, so we are currently in the phase of what is called a TOD Transit Oriented Development Study. The federal government gave one million dollar grant for CATS to study an area. It's all the way from Belmont down to Indian Trail. So it's still in the conceptual phase, they're studying, is this logical? And then, you know, if the study comes back, this is a year-long study that would also perform design work for what each station would look like as well. At the end of the year, if it comes back and Indian Trail, you know, kind of makes the cut, there are certainly a lot of hurdles to jump through, especially considering that you're jumping county lines. So obviously CATS would expect Union County and the towns to contribute financially. So there, there's a lot to work through and it's just conceptual. But, but certainly there is an active study that includes Indian Trail with it coming in in front of these townhomes.
I think light rail is something that, that's way in the future from what I can tell. I mean, you've got to have county funding, you've got to have, it's just extremely complicated going from one county to another. So, well, the question I have is what are you going to do with that light rail space there? Because I think it will be quite some time before we get light rail, if we get it.
And so that is right away, that's already dedicated for the light rail. So only the light rail can go there at this time.
So will you have landscaping or what are you going to put there?
Yeah, so it'll just be open landscaping so that they can, we won't have any structures there at all. So it'll be like what you're seeing here, sidewalks to the, the main sidewalk that's on Chestnut and then grass and stuff in between them. So there won't be any parking or anything. There'll be the townhome at their property set line, the sidewalk up to Chestnut, and then everything else will be grass.
Your traffic study, we just voted in, the council voted in three-hundred-and-fifty apartments right there at it. And I'm guessing that would be like twenty-one hundred hits a day coming out of the, out of the apartments. And how many are you saying coming out of here and how are you going to handle all that traffic?
So we're, we're working with the staff on any improvements that they have. At this time, the, any trail did not require a traffic study nor did DOT on this with the amount of units that have it. So there was not enough use on this to validate a TI request. But if there is any other updates that need to be done, that's something we'll work with staff on. Again, the, with the hub and the swim club and the turn lanes and everything that's been improved on there. If there is any other major updates, then that will be something the staff will request.
Tremendous amount of traffic going through there.
Yeah, they're, they're going to put a new light and everything at, at Chestnut when the hub comes in. So you'll actually be able to take a left off of Chestnut to seventy-four, which you can do currently. So that would definitely be a, a good plus out of there.
Any other questions? Questions here? Let's see, do we, do we have any public comments? No public comments, so. Alrighty. Do we have a, a motion?
Before I make a motion, I just, I guess my only concern will always be the schools because of the fact that there is an apartment complex coming as well as having the, you know, this, you know, having the townhouse. I mean, I know, I want us to continue to market and, and bring in good businesses, but that's my only concern. It's just, you know, when they get information from these schools that is, they consider, that the builders really consider the impacts that it does make on the school because it's not, it's not good for the kids as well as the staff members when it's overcrowdedness, you know? So that's what I just wanted to add.
How many units is this again?
Ninety-three townhomes and the commercial building.
And three bedrooms, all three bedrooms?
Two to three bedrooms.
Two to three.
Can I have one more question? I'm sorry, this will just be strictly to own, right?
They're four sellouts or four sell townhomes.
Yes, I'm saying for own, but somebody can buy it and rent it out though.
Technically, any houses that somebody owns later on, we don't have any control of what you do with your property afterwards, but we're only here to, to sell the townhomes.
Okay, but like in the beginning, it's going to be straight ownership, limited occupancy, okay?
Mattamy is the, the builder on this development, so Matty will develop and, and build these out for sale.
Is this going to have an HOA?
It will, all townhome communities, because you have to update up the, the common areas and the, and the pond and everything, so that will have an HOA.
Well, I guess with the HOA, will they have a restriction on when you, if you, if I, if I'm an owner, if I'm an owner, when can I, if I don't want to occupy it no more, can I rent it out? Will they have, will they have a clause in that?
Normally HOAs...
You can't do it after the first five years, you know what I mean, until it's built down.
Yeah, that's hard to bid when you're, when you're buying houses and stuff like that, yeah.
Yeah, a lot of them have covenants that you can only rent so many units. You don't have a covenant like that.
Not currently, no, sir. Again, this is three-hundred-plus thousand dollar townhomes. There's not going to be a ton in there for rent if I even, there was an option down. And again, probably going to be most workers from the, the hospital coming in to, to work and be able to live close to it and then, and cruise in.
Should we have further questions? All right, at this point, we go to promotions, is that correct? Okay, do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Can't right now, we, there's no public, yeah, we didn't have any public comments here, so we can only do that during public comments for each phase. Now, I think what most of you all are for is another project here tonight and you'll have your opportunity to talk on that one, so.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that zoning case, CZ two thousand and nineteen oh one oh six, I make a motion for it to be approved.
We can't have any comments, please. Okay, we have a motion. We have a second. We don't have a second.
Second?
Yeah, I see we have a second, okay. All in favor, raise your hand. All opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'll, just for clarity's sake, I'll need a, a motion for the second item as well.
Okay. Additional conditions? You're talking about the additional conditions?
So the first vote was for the comprehensive plan amendment and the second vote is for conditional zoning. So you'll just need to, to vote for this item as well.
Follow the same vote that we did, correct?
Right.
Okay, okay. Do we have a motion?
I make a motion to recommend denial of CZ two thousand and nineteen dash zero one zero six petition.
And I second it.
Okay, all in favor, right hand. All opposed, right hand, so three to two. Okay, this will come before the council. What time? What date would that be?
February the eleventh is the tentative date. We will send out notifications just as we have for community meetings and for this meeting as well.
Okay, so if anybody would like to make a comment on that during the town council meeting, that would be the date that it would be heard. We are a recommending board, so, you know, no matter how we recommend it, the final decision is made by the council. Okay, Mike, go to the next one. Tim?
Thank you, Chairman. This is another two-part process for McLendon Place Townhomes and Commercial for conditional zoning and comprehensive plan amendment. The request is to amend the comprehensive plan for mixed use on approximately thirty point nine-nine-two acres for CPA two thousand and nineteen zero zero eight seven. Currently in the comprehensive plan, it's low-density residential. They're proposing mixed use. The other part of the project for conditional zoning, CZ two thousand and nineteen zero zero eight seven. The current zoning is to conditionally rezone it. The current zoning is single-family low-density residential SF one. The proposal is to conditionally rezone it to general business district for the front commercial portion and conditional zoning, single-family high-density residential, CZ SF five on the other portion with the townhomes. Applicant is Venture Road Partners LLC. And it's to conditionally rezone property to allow up to one-hundred-and-eighty townhouse units and two retail office buildings. Here is the concept plan. This Potter Road, Venture. It's broken up into two parts in the plans. Here's a blow-up of the western section showing the two commercial buildings and their parking area. And then the townhomes in the other portion, an amenity area there to be defined. And then the lower portion, the eastern portion of the development with the lower detention ponds in the bottom corner. So architectural imagery. There's an image of the, what the townhomes could look like. There's an image of the townhomes and beside the commercial area. Here's an aerial map of the location. Again, Potter Road, Venture and the parcels involved. It's hard to see the red outline, but here's an image from above and the outline of the development. Here's a photo looking south down Potter Road at the intersection with Venture. Here's an image on Venture looking towards the intersection with the property on the right. Here's the existing zoning map showing SF one, this area, and some higher-density land uses just to the south of the development. Here's the future zoning map showing medium density in the area to the north, some low-density. And then a little bit further to the north in the Austin Village area is mixed-use areas. Consistency, the development is a part of the Austin Village Center overlay. Proposed plan for mixed use is not consistent with the Austin Village plan on that future map in the comprehensive plan, but is consistent with the mix of residential densities described in the overlay. They were required to do a traffic impact analysis. Some of those improvements are shown with the traffic circle that was shown in the concept plan at the intersection of Potter and Venture. The developer will build the roundabout there. And then there'll be some turn lane improvements in a couple of other areas. NC DOT had some comments and they're negotiating with the developer now over those comments and the developer's going to respond. So that's in process. Traffic and parking must meet all NC DOT requirements. Residential parking required four hundred and fifty spaces, provided four hundred and fifty-seven. That's counted garages and driveways. Retail office parking area, sixty-five parking spaces required, and they provided eighty-one. Water and sewer is accessible to the property. And the applicant is already working with Public Works, responding to some comments with them. Union County Environmental Health requested, as with anyone, that they reflect all their existing structures and onsite water disposal systems, septic systems, and provide a note on the plans. Union County Fire Marshal approved the concept plan. And during site plan review, they'll also be required to provide a truck maneuvering plan during site plan review. Schools, school impact analysis. They projected one-hundred-and-twenty-nine students. The enrollment shown below, Indian Land Elementary School with ninety percent. Middle School, ninety-seven percent, Sun Valley, ninety-eight percent. Again, they noted back to us that after the construction with current bond work, the high school number will be coming down to ninety-one percent. Board of Education, they mentioned on everything, reserves to write to modify assignments if necessary. So if there's not room at the time they complete building, they'll make assignments as necessary. Community meetings. There were two community meetings, fifteen people in attendance. Some of the comments made was about traffic in the area, water runoff concerns, concerns that townhome prices may be too low, commercial business not fit for the area, and concern for wildlife in the area. The applicant responded on those questions during the meeting. In summary, the request is consistent with the comprehensive plan after the plan amendment. Promotes the goals of the comprehensive plan for land use and housing as described in your, your staff report. Seems to be a reasonable request. Staff suggested conditions listed in the packet. Those conditions are listed out. And there's, number six gets into the density for the area in the request. And then that completes my presentation portion.
Okay, looking across the room, I can tell there's probably a lot of pent-up emotions. Let's all hang on, let the process go through. You'll all get an opportunity. If you have not signed up and you want to make comments, have three minutes, you can sign up over here. And we're going to, the staff will, we'll ask the staff any questions that we have. Then we'll have public comments. There'll be a presentation on the project by the builder, so I just want to let you know how things will go. So I just want to let you know how things will go. So just hang on and hang on to the comments, and then you'll have your three minutes when we call you up. Any questions for the staff on this?
I mean, I love you guys a lot, so don't take what I'm about to say wrong. When you guys get traffic, not traffic studies, school studies, the Board of Ed, honestly, I'm going to be very, very honest. They're just giving you numbers. Like, what proof do they have with the impact of the school?
Yeah. We're not, as staff, we're not able to tell them they can't move forward with the request. And so we can't base our decision on the school data. We can just require them to provide the data, and so that we can take that data and that report they give us in the school impact analysis. We send that along with the plan over to county schools to give, to ask them, what do you want us to say back to our applicant? And what do you want us to say back to the planning board and town council? And that's, and what's in your packet is what they came back with. It's what they send us. So there's not, we lay it out, there's concerns he had. And that's all we can do. We can't make a decision on it. We present the facts to you, and then you vote to recommend or not.
Because I work in Sun Valley High School, and there's hardly any room for those children that are like twice my height to get through the building. So, I mean, and then, you know, I'll leave all that for later on. But I'm just saying, like, when they say it's over capacity, and it's not going to get any better.
Yeah. That's straight from...
And the middle school is no better, so...
Straight from the board.
Any other questions for the staff?
We'd like to hear the presentation. Can we, or do we have to hit a...
We go, comments first, don't we?
Okay.
Okay. Excuse me.
You've got to read the rule sheet, read the rule...
I am, I am. Okay. Now, it's the opportunity for you all to say what you think about the project. What I want to ask you is, and this comes from the town attorney, which we read at every meeting, so it's not aimed at anybody here tonight, but concerns our meetings. And it's, unfortunately, over the last several weeks, certain citizens have attended public hearings of this and other town boards and caused disruption, including comments deemed racist and threatening. As a result, I want to clarify those in attendance the following. You may not speak until recognized and invited to speak by this board. Any comments or outbursts from the audience will be considered a disruption of the meeting, and the person causing the disruption will be warned once. Upon a second comment or outburst, you will be asked to leave the meeting. Comments are limited to three minutes per speaker. You may not give your three minutes to another speaker to increase that person's allotted time. Citizens will be expected to be civil in their language and presentation and act within reasonable standards of courtesy. We ask the audience as well as the speakers to maintain order and decorum in your conduct throughout the public hearing. That being said, you may not engage in slander, name-calling, personal attacks, or threatening or otherwise aggressive speech or behavior that I or this board reasonably believe will imminently result in a disruption of the meeting. So, anyway, we want you all, you know, who have signed up, to say what you have to say. So we will first call up, is it Richard Rust? And you have...
Chair? Would you flip the page? I think the, yeah, it's off from there.
I'm sorry. If you have a seat for a second, I'll call the first one. No, you're kind of in the middle, I think. Bear with me as I struggle with these names. Is it Joanne Johnson?
I put my name to the last.
To the last, okay. Oh, okay. Becky Zarski?
Zarski.
Okay. Okay. You have three minutes to speak. Yeah, if you'd like to come up, and please state your name and your address. And you have three minutes. The green light will go on. When you have 30 seconds left, the yellow light will go on. And then when the red light comes on, we have to cut you off, so we can get everybody in.
Well, I wasn't really prepared for this, so I'm just doing this off the cuff. I have lived in Indian Trail for over 20 years now. The reason that my husband and I purchased our property was because it had a country feel. We felt like we were out in Indian Trail, not in Charlotte. And it was a safe place for us to raise our kids. What it's becoming is not feeling like that. We've had, since we've lived there, we've got Brookhaven and all these huge subdivisions going up all around us, and it's losing that country feel. It's also becoming less safe as far as the traffic flow. And I can go on about a lot of the issues that have already been covered as far as the wildlife issues. We are to the point where we now have coyotes in our neighborhood where we never used to because they're being driven out of their natural environment. The taxes of Indian Trail people, I don't think warrant this. Obviously, the schools, I think that's left unsaid. I mean, if you go back, I don't know if you can go back on your little thingy there and show the overcrowding in the schools. What I saw was Union County, 90%. Sun Valley Middle was 97%, and Sun Valley High was 98% of capacity. This is ridiculous. And we've been rezoned for our kids too many times...
Thirty seconds.
...to go to other areas. You're only hurting the children in overcrowding their schools and hurting the people who are trying to teach them by overcrowding their classrooms. Traffic's a whole nother issue, so that's it.
Thank you. If you will, please hold the applause. Jeff Trol. Please come up and state your name and your address, and you have 30 seconds. Oh, excuse me, three minutes. Trying to speed it up too much.
Jeff Trol, 849 Carmona Court. I'm here tonight to make certain everyone here realizes the impact of this rezoning on the north side from a single-family to multi-family. As you mentioned, it will contain 180 units. In 2004, most of you were not on the board at that time. We had numerous meetings with the developer and the planning board, and they unanimously approved a 20-acre south-side property that would contain 153 units, made up of townhomes, duplexes, and pinwheel homes. This is still in the records of the planning board. This property was timbered out by the developer. All the trimmings and trash remained and is still there today. If the north side of Venture Road, Potter Road rezoning is approved, then Dean Harrell and his partner will develop the south side. As far as the overcrowding in schools, with this property being developed, it's going to add to that overcrowding. These two developments will potentially add 600-plus residents and automobiles. It would severely affect already overcrowded schools and add dramatically to existing traffic congestion. There are five or six similar projects that have been approved or proposed at this time. We strictly oppose the request for zoning changes based on the negative impact that this will have on our single-family homes. Now, thank you.
Thank you. Please, please hold the applause, please. Okay. Bill McCormick. Please state your name and your address, please.
Bill McCormick, 1011 Raywood Court. I'm here representing several neighbors, I guess. They couldn't all make it. We're on a street off Venture. So right now, I know everybody's mentioned the traffic several times, but one thing is pleasant, is people turn left off Potter's and Pleasant Plain. That now is a tremendous backup. And unless they add all these additional people to it, and it's going to be worse than Atlanta in this area. We don't know, I don't know what the value is of these homes. What are they selling for? I noticed a comment earlier that you're talking about that they're low-value. That would be a concern, I guess. But I think the major concern is the overcrowding. Trying to get down Potter's Road now is an absolute nightmare. And, I don't know, is there anything else? But we are all concerned about trying to get to work in the morning. Or at least our neighbors are, because it's now, it's a nightmare now. And most of my stuff is what everybody has already complained, said about. So I guess that's it. All right, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Everyone, please hold down the applause and make sure your cellphones are cut off, please. Next one would be, I'm struggling with the first name, Domatroll? Donatroll? Okay. Please state your name and your address, please. Thank you. You have three minutes.
Donatroll, 849 Carmona Court. I guess basically I don't need to rehash everything again, but do we want Indian Trail to look like this, townhomes, apartments? Welcome to Indian Trail, the land of townhomes and apartments. Sometimes it comes down to the point of quality of life, and I don't think we're achieving that here. Basically, I would not approve or ask you not to approve this project. Too crowded, too much.
Thank you. Lucy Hewitt. Please state your name and your address.
Lucy Hewitt, 848 Carmona Court. Basically, I agree with everything that's been said about the traffic in the schools. We don't need any more children trying to go to school in the area. But my main concern is that when we moved here 28 years ago, we left Charlotte. But now we're in Charlotte again. It's not the Indian Trail we moved to. It's not what the people who were here then thought Indian Trail ought to be. If y'all want us to look like Charlotte and be like Charlotte, then that's what you're doing with this, and with the hub and with all these other things you're doing. This is not necessary, and it is not good quality of life. And it's only going to make crime worse, traffic worse. The school situation's definitely going to be worse. So you really need to take into consideration what it is you want Indian Trail to be. If you want Charlotte, then that's what you're headed for. If you want it to be what it used to be, then you need to stop all this building and crowding and density, high-density stuff you're doing. It's not what Indian Trail is supposed to be.
Thank you. Please hold the applause. Thank you. Okay. Richard Rust. Please state your name and your address.
Richard Rust, 220 Morfield Drive. I would like the council members to seriously consider the Pandora's Box that would be opened up by allowing this zoning to go through. This project does absolutely nothing for the citizens and your constituents that live in this area and surrounding areas. Let's be realistic and talk in common sense terms. You're talking about 274 units, target age 50 years old, which means they have all the kids that they're going to have. So potentially dropping 1,000 people and almost as many vehicles because 50-year-old target age adults have kids that drive, and most kids have their own cars. And you want to drop that into this geographic area that has no ability to absorb it, and I mean no ability. And the plan mitigates, and the plan to mitigate this disaster is putting a roundabout at Venture and Potter's? Is that a joke? To what? Hesitate everybody up to the next intersection? We can argue numbers, but don't forget to include traffic from people visiting all those people, and that the commercial part of the project will also bring more traffic into the area. Everybody in this area has had to leave for work early and earlier because of the constant parade of cars on Potter's Road. How long to get through the light at Pleasant Plains, then to get through to Old Monroe Road? Going back the other way, how about the wait time trying to get from Potter's Road to Wesley Chapel Elementary? That's a treat. How about the line where chest not empties into Matthews-Weddington Road? Now you're waiting in line with a few more hundred cars. Now how's your morning commute looking? Beyond traffic, this serves no purpose. This area is not like Detroit where people have fled and you're trying to get souls into a geographic area as part of some revitalization project. The people of this area are thriving and doing nicely, even though most were already worrying about overdevelopment before this project was proposed. I and many, many, many others feel the job of this town council is to protect the citizens of this area from this exact thing. If you want to increase tax-based property value in the area, do it by making the most desirable place around. Make it as peaceful as it can be during an explosion of growth, protecting as much land as you can from the influx of another county's problem. I have a capitalist mindset. I have no problem with a developer wanting to make money, but not on the backs of the established citizens. This is not the time, and it's certainly not the place, for this kind of project. You want to develop it? Get rid of the commercial project, build houses with some land around it. That is irresponsible growth in a semi-royal area. We all drive by the Harris Teeter, knowing one day the Longhorn will be gone, just like a lot of things that attracted us to this area a long time ago. Council members, I encourage you to be good stewards for the people you represent. Arrest the overdevelopment in this area for as long as the majority of voters call for it. If this goes through, other developers will point to this project and say, "You did it there for them, why not here for me?" And that's Pandora's Box opening. "Oh, Harris Teeter's already slammed, more people, what now? Zone for another shopping center." Well, more people, more cars, need more gas, zone for more gas stations. And more people will always equal the need for more law enforcement, et cetera, et cetera. So please, make sure that you're proud of the vote you cast.
Thank you for your comments. Please hold down the clapping, please, so we can get through. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Robert Seago. Okay. Please state your name and address, and you have three minutes.
My name is Robert Seago. I've been a resident homeowner, property owner here since 1979. This is like deja vu. Approximately 20 years ago, we were here for the same thing, same property, same owner, and so forth, except he's gone across the street and purchased more property in order to make this even larger. And we were able to get the town council four to one to vote against this, and we're back here doing it again. And they did allow him to change the zoning to what the previous, one of the previous people stated. But what I am saying is, these are cow trails, Indian trails. They were paved. This is not a grid system that you can develop high-density. It is, what we have is what we've got. There is no expanding Potter's Road or any of these other places. And if you guys, if you live here, you should be at least awake. It won't work. I mean, it's not working now, and it's going to be a lot worse than what it is. In this particular place, there is no multi-family homes of anything close to this at present. And this is going to open the door, just like one of the previous speakers said, to make the things a lot worse. And it'll be time to move the heck out of here. Because I've been here, I enjoy the property I'm on, and I enjoy living here. And it's getting a lot worse. It's probably 10 times worse than it was even 20 years ago when this project was first, you know, laid out for us. And it's a worse situation as far as what they want to do now than they did then. So I can't believe anybody with common sense would allow something like this in this particular area. You know, take it somewhere else, I don't care. But don't put it in my backyard. Thank you.
Thank you. Please, no applause. No applause, come on. Wayne Bell. Please state your name and your address. You have three minutes.
My name is Wayne Bell.
My name is Wayne Bell, I live at 124 Middleton Ave. And I've lived in Warwick Acres for 30 years and echoed the concerns that have been expressed about the development. We were here 20 years ago, when a firebrand named Mercedes Cass sat on the town council. And she had the courage to stand up to a proposal, and I'll, she can correct me later, but I'll paraphrase, she said, "How, how can you tell me that this fits in with the character of the surrounding community? It doesn't." And as the other gentleman echoed, I'm all for somebody making profit for investing in development, but not at the expense of the surrounding people. And it does not fit into the character, and I've got a short time, and I just wanted to address some very quick points. I'm asking the town planning board, why are we deviating from a report that has this listed now? And I pulled this from the town's website. It's, it's zoned out for medium-density residential. And it, and it actually fractures off the idea of having these little zones, like the Austin Village. Why do, what are we gonna put in those two commercial buildings? Another gas station? Another pharmacy? We don't need any other commercial. They're just finishing off the Grove, which is a nice building in that Austin Village. We don't need more commercial. Let's leave Potter Road, Potter Road, and not make it into Wilkinson Boulevard. It's a resident, you know, it's not gonna be a strip mall. And I question, I'm a licensed professional engineer in North Carolina and several other states, and I am gonna challenge the traffic study that the developer had. And I would hope the town would question it, too. Why would you even, I mean, it's alright, the developer can spend his money on whatever traffic study he wants, but I would think the town would cast a very squinty eye on conclusions. They rate traffic analysis in terms of grades, and they're saying Potter Road's now a grade C, and that after this development, it will stay at a grade C. I would hope you would not let them insult your intelligence. It's not grade C right now, it's better down to a grade D or lower. And you dump that much more traffic onto it, and to claim that with a straight face that it's gonna stay at that level? Don't, don't, don't be that naive. And I won't go over the intersection improvements, but until they do something all the way up at Pleasant Plains, a roundabout is a Band-Aid. It's, it's not gonna do anything.
Thank you for your comments. Yeah, please, no applause, no applause, please. Shirley, is it Bosbach? Please state your name and your address.
My name is Shirley Bosbach. I, uh, live at 6132 Davidson Drive. This is my third time to fight this development in this general area here. My husband and I have lived there, we moved there in 1974. We raised our kids there. We've had a nice, quiet neighborhood of single families, low crime, just a really good place to live and raise your family. And to see this coming back again is just really disturbing. I am already looking at, do I need to get out of Indian Trail because of what y'all are allowing to, to happen here? When I, when I, when we moved here in 1974, from the border of Charlotte to Monroe, there was nothing but trees. There's some big, big changes. The schools, the schools are definitely overcrowded. It takes me sometimes, in the middle of the day, five-plus minutes to get out of my neighborhood in Warwick Acres. And I live just one street in from where this development is that you're talking about putting here. So that puts me right on it practically. I am very disappointed that y'all would even be considering this, and I certainly hope that you will pay attention to what the, uh, citizens of Indian Trail are trying to tell you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Frank Todd. Please state your name and your address.
Hi, I'm Frank Todd, I'm 817 Carmona Court. I did wanna make a comment, you said there were like 450 possible cars in that development. If each one of them takes 15 seconds to get to Fincher and Potter, that's almost two hours. Two hours to get on to Potter, two hours, and then coming back the other way, another two hours. I moved out of Charlotte to Indian Trail to get away from this crazy traffic. And here it is. You're coming here and trying to propose not only the bad traffic we've got already, but worse traffic. It's crazy, it's nuts. If I wanted to live in Atlanta, I'd move back to Atlanta. If I wanted to live in Chicago, I'd move to Chicago. If I wanted to live in DC again, I'd move back to DC, where it took me an hour and a half to two hours every morning to get to the subway station, to take another hour ride in. It's ridiculous, it's nuts. Two hours at Fincher and Potter? That's nuts. Then when you hit Pleasant Plains, you go, what are you gonna wait, another three hours just to get all the traffic out? Totally nuts. This is ludicrous, I can't even believe anyone's even thinking about it and putting their name to a proposal that says this works. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Andrea or Andra Matlock?
I'm Andrea, no, it's Andrew.
Okay, you write like me.
I'm the best-looking Andrea you've ever seen.
Please state your name and address.
My name is Andrew Matlock, and I'm at 833 Carmona Court. I'll, I'll give you the results of the petition that was created last Sunday on a change.org backslash IndianTrail-density-concerns, which is now up over to 330 signed signatures. The intersection of Potter's Road and Fincher is facing a housing development project that is gonna drastically hinder our quality of life moving forward, and is immediately gonna become problematic for our schools, our roads, prior to creating a ripple effect that you're actually seeing here in Union County with these apartment complexes and things of that nature. There's a lot of citizens here that, I'm glad to meet my neighbors here, especially Mercedes Cass, my senior cast, excuse me, my elementary school Spanish teacher. So I'm as local as it gets to this area, born and raised off Potter's Road and Indian Trail, and Weddington, and UNC Charlotte. So I understand what this area means to me, and in fact, that I've raised my family to be here and chose not to go anywhere else. We're basically facing a crisis here from moving from single-family to multifamily residential and neighborhood business district. This entire area is single-family, so I don't understand what's the issue here with not keeping it consistent with what we're dealing with here. We're dealing with a problem here in western Union County, where we're facing the growth, which none of us can stop, and I am as capitalistic as it goes, so I'm happy for Mr. Harrell and all of his partners to make money on his investment in what he's purchasing land and actually developing. I'm fine with that. But the problem is, is we're dealing with trying to fix Mecklenburg County's overcrowding and housing crisis that is slowly seeping into our community. It's now our problem that we need to figure out how to resolve. Are we gonna become an apartment complex, utilitarian area where everyone, that's what we're gonna look like? Or can we actually be the area that a lot of our citizens, who are not local like me, came here for this purpose? So, so it's a conversation we need to have. I, I don't think any of us are unrealistic in what we're asking. I, I, I think we wanna have a deep, sincere, reasonable conversation about what makes the most sense. Let it be single-family homes, but do not let it become something that we, as locals and even people who are new to this area or moved here for a purpose, looks like something that we never, ever expected. And I just ask that, that you guys act like this is your backyard.
Okay, thank you. Okay. I'm gonna have a real hard time with this last name. How many people out there are named Travis? Okay, Travis, please, please come up, tell me how to spell your last name and give me your address.
My name is Travis Day, D-A-Y-E. My address is 856 Carmona Court. Could you go back to the map where you showed the, the whole geographic area? Okay. There's another area there that the owner, the developer owns, which is 20 acres, which has already been zoned 13 units per acre, which is also a part of this at another part at another time that we need to consider. Could you? If you could, it's in that circle area, so you're looking at, a little bit lower? Yeah. So you're looking at 20 acres there, plus you're looking at 30 acres there, so you're looking at, you know, 600-plus units? And that's already zoned multifamily, so you can combine both of these, I mean, it's just way too much. And I moved here less than a year ago from Charlotte University. I wanted to get away from all the traffic, schools, I wanna get the better school systems, all that kinda stuff, wildlife, and it's just, it's gonna turn into what I didn't think it was gonna be. And I think we should all vote against this. Thank you.
Thank you. Gary Walter. Please state your name and address, and you have three minutes.
Hello, my name is Gary Walter, I live at 5804 Indian Brook Drive. I have lived in this area since 1962, five miles from here, probably, maybe more than a lot of you here. So I have seen a tremendous amount of change in the area. And Mr. Rust, he hit on the main topics, my concerns, along with everyone else, schools, quality of life, traffic, safety, whether it be fire department or police department. Those are big issues that you dump, who knows how many people, 600-plus, into a community in a small area with high traffic, everyone from Wesley Chapel on out trying to get to Charlotte. So Potter's Road is a nightmare. Monroe Road, Chestnut Lane, Indian Trail, Waxville, all the same. So any development of this type in this area is going to greatly impact all of those. And it's not what our community is. So many of us lived here for so long, and they, they see the change, and in part, it's sort of okay, you take it, it's progress, but at one point, at what point does progress stop? And just dumping starts. They just push their problem down on us and force us to use our resources to take care of it. And for those citizens who have lived here for 10, 20, or more years, this is not the town they moved to. And they probably moved here for the same reason that people do today, to get a different quality of life. So my concern is for my family, for my town, and everyone else here that is a resident. Thank you.
Tiffany Blackie. Please come up, state your name and address, and you have three minutes.
My name is Tiffany Blackie, I live at 5711 Indian Brook Drive. I'd appreciate if you wouldn't let the Yankee accent fool you, I've been a taxpayer here for over 25 years. So I'm, looking back at the other picture, the amount of tree canopy that's gonna be lost is just unbelievable. And I didn't even know what Travis was talking about with that other land that's gonna be developed. And I'd like to say, too, that Richard was excellent, which we ought to say. But, yeah, I could've swore back right before the recession, we were talking about how we didn't know how the sewage would be handled, too, so I guess that's been all figured out, but back when we were planning in the past. But I really don't have nothing to say, other than look at us. We love it here. We don't want you to ruin it. Look what you're approving right there at the hub and all that other stuff. Right? Don't you wanna keep it nice? Let's be better than Charlotte. That's all I got to say.
Tim Pollard, and I can't figure the last name out, Coors? Tim Pollard Coors?
Yep, I'll pass, that brings pretty much covered.
Okay, thank you. David, is it Witters?
Williams.
Williams, okay. Oh, y'all write too much like me.
Thank you. My name is David Williams, I live at 3206 Fincher Road. I echo everything that has been said here. I've got so many things to say, and it is an emotional thing. We all live here, we love this area, that's the main thing. I'm here, I've been here for 20 years, I love my acre, it's so nice, I mean, it's a piece of heaven to me. And I understand that, I'm a capitalist, too, I believe in that, and understand that it's private land, you've gotta develop it. But, you know, this thing right here is a monster. It does not belong here whatsoever. I mean, it's, this is a joke to me. I mean, come on, man, I mean, you have nothing but a single-family people that live all around this area, and, you know, don't even get me started on the traffic. I mean, my goodness, like they say, it takes forever just to get out of this area, and I have to go to work every day. It is a major, major problem. This, this is a disaster. It does not belong here. We don't want it, and that's for sure, and I hope you consider turning this thing down. There's definitely better ways to go about this. You know, people have come and they said they represent other neighbors and stuff. I'd like to take a minute to represent the raccoons and the squirrels, and the red-tailed hawks, and the, and the falcons. I live, I live, I know these woods better than anybody in Union County, trust me. I've lived here for 20 years. Me and my dog have hiked through these woods for 20 years, and we love it. I understand it's gotta be developed, I apologize, I'm getting emotional, but dang gummit, man, you, you gotta leave some green space somewhere. This needs to be turned into a park. I'm serious. Forget developing anything, make it a park. Because, I mean, where, where else are you gonna have any green around here if you don't leave this? This is right in the middle of Indian Trail, Stallins, everything else. I mean, the, the owls live to be 100 years old, there's two mating pairs that live there. They could've been there 50, 75 years, you're gonna just come in and wipe out their home? Give me a break, guys, come on. Think about this very carefully before you say, "Go ahead for it," 'cause it don't belong here. We don't want it, we don't need it, do something else with it. We like being here, I'm not going anywhere, I'm 65 years old. I love my place, I'm not moving. Even if you do develop it, I'm gonna have to live with it. I'm gonna have to put up a big privacy fence, because the way you propose it, it's gonna be like, people are gonna be peeping in my yard. You know? This has gotta stop, guys, come on. Please, think about it. You've got to leave some green area. You gotta.
Thank you. Chad Coward. Please state your name and address, and you have three minutes.
Can you go back to the, the one from, it shows both sides? So, my problem is, is I'm, my name is Chad Coward, I'm at 3200 Bowhundert Trail, and I back up to the back corner down here, basically where that leg comes down and the main road comes in. And what I've noticed is, is he asked- And what I've noticed is, is he asked for 170, a permit to get 170, but then asked for a potential 10 extra units, at his discretion, I would assume. And what I noticed on the other website was the 10 extra units he's got are the most offensive units, the ones that are literally right on the border. If you go back to the one you were on before that actually showed the pond, right there, that little dogleg pond at the end is not actually, on the other website, is actually a unit right there and another unit that faces with its back to the back property. And then there was another unit that goes in between those two, right around the cul-de-sac, which makes me wonder, we're going to give him 10 units, he's removed the most offensive and objectionable units to be added in later, I guess, when nobody is around, at his discretion, so that we can't argue or anything. And for me, that's just a violation of good faith. I mean, at best, these emissions are conspicuous and dubious, and at worst, underhanded and devious. My other problem is, coming down that road, you're going to be shining right in my bedroom window, and I would at least like, possibly if you do approve it, some light mitigation, light pollution mitigation or something right in there, some sort of green wall. But my biggest problem is, is at least deny the extra 10 units or whatever that he's wanting at his discretion to be added later on, because I believe he's already got them planned, he's just withdrawn them from this to get it through. And I just feel like that violates good faith, and considering everybody else and their comments, kind of says what I need to say. Thank you much.
Thank you. Okay, last but not least, Joanne Johnson. Please state your name and your address.
My name is Joanne Johnson. I live at 6016 Potter Road, right in front of Potter Road and Venture Drive. So you know I don't really want anything like that. I've been out there for 20 years, and I've had 10 mailboxes knocked down. Every other day, somebody hits somebody in the rear end out on Potter Road. We've had them in the front yard, we've had them in the side yard, we've had them in the ditch, across the street. There's a stop sign out there on Venture Drive, Pitcher Road. Nobody stops for it. They just come right through it. So therefore, we have wrecks out there all the time. I invite y'all to come out there at 5:00, if you can get out there. And like the other one said, it's bumper to bumper in the evening and in the morning. Sometimes I get up at 5:30, and I look out the door, and they're coming up Venture Drive just as hard and fast as they can come up. So we don't need any more. There's nothing, I'm not got anything against people coming in, but we don't need this multi-housing. You've got like 300 more people coming in there and two ways to get out, and both of them are on Venture Road. So that leads up to Potter Road where they're talking about, around about, and that's going to be in my living room, just about. So I hope you all think more, think hard about bringing all this, many more people in and out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you sign up for comment?
Yes, sir.
You did? Okay. Okay. Come up and state your name and address. Well, I don't miss that one.
It was, didn't have lines on it, it was on the very back of the page. Levi Castle, 6015 Sincone Road.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought I called, I'm sorry. I scratched that one out, I didn't call your name. Go right ahead.
Thank you all very much. You guys have a tough job. Thank you all for taking your time to be here. Mr. Ward, congratulations, wherever you are. Glad to have you here. I've been here since '12. I came down here for the job, moved here from rural eastern Kentucky. And the name Indian Trail spoke to me. Met my wife here, plan to stay here as long as I can, raise my two little girls. If you could go, staff, please, to this, to this map, please. There's a section of this that looks like Italy upside down.
The boot.
We can get to it, right? So start at the right, work your way up, and you see the little Italy upside down there. There's two lots, one of them looks like a capital L, and that's one of the two lots that our home sits on. Mr. Reed Privet used to live there until he passed away, and we were fortunate enough to acquire the home. Mr. Troll made a comment about clearcutting, and where I'm from in the mountains, when that happens, it causes lots of ecological impacts. My property, at the bottom of that capital L, on a minor rain floods. And if you, staff, please, could go to this, this image, please? The one that showed the dogleg pond from before. If you look at the top of the map, you'll notice two, what I assume to be wastewater retention ponds, we're getting there. That's good enough. Maybe the next one? So that large pond, top right of what they've got. So my property would be right about there, and if any of you have ever lived in the woods or in a wooded area, large bodies of water collect mosquitoes. I don't really have to go into why that's a bad thing nowadays with the number of vectors that are out there for different viruses. But I do want to address other things, I know I don't have that much time. First of all, a lot of projects being considered by you guys, and we appreciate that, but is anyone keeping a tally on the number of new students being introduced by these divisions? We can consider them one by one, but if we don't take into account the total number of changes, I think we're going to miss some points there. The flex face that sits currently on Old Charlotte Highway, right next to the Dollar General store and the food line, that is still empty. I presume that that is similar to the space that the project individuals are proposing. If we can't get small businesses into there, what kind of small businesses are they going to bring into this? Again, the name Indian Trail tells us what we're about here. I, literally, that is part of what drew me to come here, that name. If, are we going to continue away from trails? We could start to call it sidewalks, Indian sidewalks, maybe. I don't know, that's not a real appropriate joke, but is that it? My only last statement would be that Venture lacks enough space as it is, there's no side for anyone to get off, ditches. I don't see how these road improvements are going to change that. Thank you.
Okay. As I mentioned, we're all volunteers up here, and we live in the town with you all. So I want to ask you, we now will hear from the developer on his proposal, and we've given everybody an opportunity to talk if they want to talk about it. So I'd ask for you to be very, you know, be quiet and give him an opportunity to make his presentation. That's what our rules are all about, you know, that everybody gets an opportunity to say what they want to say. And then we've heard from you all, we'll hear from him, and then we'll make a vote. And so let's all be orderly and polite and courteous, and let him do his thing now, and then we'll have our vote.
I have a question, you'll click. Does he play with the game?
I'll fix it anyway.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Okay.
Good evening, board. Thank you very much. My name is Tommy Price, and yes, I've heard people say they've lived here 10 years, 15 years. I was born in Union County 63 years ago. So I have seen, I am local, it takes me about seven minutes to get to my home from right here. And yes, I remember when I first got my driver's license, there was a stoplight at Sharon Amity, and there wasn't another one till you got to Highway 601 through and up. So a lot of things have changed. This town hall has drastically changed where you were just a few years ago. We're not a big out-of-state, come in here, throw something up, and get out of town. The owner of this piece of property is a local boy. He was actually born at the corner of Venture and Potter. So he's lived here all of his life, and I think his reputation speaks for itself. I heard comments about people running a stop sign at Venture, people knocking down mailboxes. What we're going to propose, and we're working to figure out with DOT, whether we put a traffic light or roundabout there. Either one of them will slow that traffic down. We're going back.
Come on, folks, let's let him talk.
If you're coming from Chestnut, coming down Potter, and you've got to slow down to go around a roundabout instead of just booking straight on through, and I drive down Potter Road, right past Venture, go into my office every day and come back. I heard people talking about Pleasant Plains. I do know that DOT is in the process of putting a roundabout there now. I'll be honest with you, the one at the end of Potter and Waxellian Trail, when I first heard they were doing that, I was, I didn't, but it actually has really worked out great. The gentleman with the question about the 180 units versus 170, the reason that is, is when we got a little further into design, we had to remove those. We just forgot to change to the 180 to 170. Can't put them in. This property will bring in a minimum of, a minimum, just for the structures, $110,000 a year in taxes to the town Indian Trail. We have over 50 Union County materials suppliers, subcontractors, that we support and use for our projects, keeping those tax dollars and the jobs in Union County. Somebody else asked about the price point of these. They'll be from $250,000 to $300,000. We are going to offer a plan with a master down to try to pull in some empty nesters, retirees, whatever. There are only two stories, trying to keep that down. You can see from the elevations that we had done, that what we're proposing is a very nice product. Everybody's got the wrong idea about apartments and things now. 30 years ago, yeah, people lived in apartments or townhomes because they couldn't afford a home. That's not the case anymore. People make that choice. They want an HOA. Something came up earlier, may have been even in the other one, about rental units. That question came up in our community meetings, and I'm not sure we're able to limit that legally. But as I tried to explain to the person that had the question there, this will be controlled by an HOA. If a unit needs painting, HOA paints it. If the grass needs cutting, the grass, whether it's rental or owned, they'll most likely be taken care of, well, I know that will be taken care of better than a single-family homeowner that doesn't appreciate and take care of his property. We had 129 students to the schools, only 39 of those, and that was the school year 28, 29, is when that's projected, that the impact would be 29 students at somebody I'll let, this is our engineer, Mark Khan, or I'll entertain any questions you have from me.
Okay, we'll open up for questions, and folks will be asking the questions, and we have all your comments in mind while we're asking, so let's all give them an opportunity to respond, so.
My question, I guess I was, I guess I did read it correctly. So they're predicting this from, for 28 years ago?
No, no, no.
No, it says 20, because we're in 2020, so like eight years, so they're thinking like eight years from now? That's what they're saying, eight years from now, that's going to be like, what, you said how many, well, how many students again?
In the high school, 39.
Okay, I'll follow what would that one?
Well, now, that number doesn't come from the school system. That comes from an independent professional that we hire to do a school impact study.
Well, did the, will the resident, do they think that the resident, the residents want to change in eight years?
No, they just base it out to where they figure, once the project, if it gets started at the end of 2020 or the first quarter of '21, it'll be at least three years before it's completely finished, and they always project out to a later time, to an established final product.
Okay. So it's an independent company?
It is.
Okay. Do you know the name, or should I just call the board and ask?
The board of education doesn't have a clue.
I work for Sun Valley High School, so.
I know, I heard you.
And I have children at Sun Valley High School in Little.
This is done by a lady named Susan Clapp. Her firm has done several of these for us. And if you'd like, if you'll, I can get your information from the website, and I'll send you the contact if you want to give her a call.
I'm just curious, that's all. I just don't understand how that, that just make any sense to me.
Mark says her information's in your packet.
Yeah, I'll look it up. All right, I'll look it up. Okay. Is there any, before I go on with anything else, I am definitely, I heard the citizens, and I will say to you, we are volunteers, we are citizens just like you. So you guys, you was making comments, you thinking that we're making this, we're not making a decision. This decision is not up to us. Okay? So I just wanted to make that clear. My question, is there any other area, and let's say if this doesn't get approved, and then go to the town council, that's who you needed to see. You, well, is there another location that you can, this is sound like a great project, first of all, but I just think that the location cannot handle it. So I wanted to know if there's another location that can handle, and you know, the area, that's still an Indian Trail, but that can be moved, that's a better, a safer location? I'm just curious, is you?
No, man.
Okay.
This is, and you know, we had the traffic study done, we've got to do turning lanes up Chestnut, we've got turning lanes coming from both directions into both entrances. We've got either the roundabout or a traffic signal, whichever one DOT hopefully decides will be the best fix there.
Okay.
We've actually got turning lanes up Waxellian Trail and Venture coming back this way. So you know, we paid a professional traffic study company to prepare that study, then get sent to DOT. DOT looks at it and says, "Well, we think you should add this or add that." And that's all been done, and these, what you have are the final recommendations.
Okay. I might have some more questions.
And that's based on, the traffic study group physically sends people out there with a clicker, like I had to do in college in engineering school, and sit there and count cars during the peak, peak times. It from, I think they come from 7:00 to 9:00 in the morning and 4:00 to 6:00 in the evening, and just sit there and count cars.
Any other questions?
I'll wait till the lions on my head, so.
I think it was mentioned, I don't know if it's, but I think it was mentioned that another property was...
Yeah, purchased, what was it? You guys had purchased the other property that wasn't developed? Or was it a different?
You mean across Venture?
Right.
That's actually the property that this owner was born and grew up on. It's old family property, that, where he was born.
So I think, I think this, I mean, the project is, like you said, is a good project, but I think just looking at the area, and I think one of the property owners stated that, hey, single-family would be, in my estimation, would be a better fit there, especially with that land and potential layout of a single-family versus, you know, multifamily.
That's part of the issue, is the layout and the shape of this piece of property, trying to make that work and get the units that you need to get. The numbers just don't work. We were trying to do a good, we had, donors, he's on this now for, I don't know, at least eight, I would say eight years, but don't hold me to that. But there were some old dilapidated mobile homes in there, the squatters were living in, and we've torn all those down except for one and gotten rid of them. But you know, it was a mess, and we're just trying to create a good-looking product and a good situation for that gateway to down Venture. And just, I know, I heard one lady say something about the roundabout being all the way in her front yard. I explained to her at the community meeting that if you look at that... that drawing, the roundabout originally, well, when we first drew it, that's just where it showed up, but we're gonna pull it back to get it all the way onto our property. Um, and not, cause, you know, there's, the right of way there is not wide enough to move it over and we're not gonna do that, so.
Any other questions?
I don't, I don't.
Already had public comment.
His question wasn't answered correctly.
Um, my question, oh, I'm sorry.
I think, yeah, the, the property that I think they mentioned, that some folks said they, oh, some time ago, that they came in for that, uh, a different piece of property is, owned by the same, this is the same.
That's his old, that's his home place where he was born. It's right across Venture own pond.
So it wasn't, uh, proposed to develop or anything like that?
No, and we don't know when something happened with that.
Just let the process continue, please. Okay, you had another question?
Okay, yes. Um, the stormwater problems, how will you plan on addressing those?
I'll let the engineer do that. Sure. Um, so this, for the stormwater, um, as the site stands right now, there's really no impervious cover, so we go through a series of calculations that we have to assess the, the time of concentration that waters leave in the site. We submit all these calculations to the state, it's reviewed, they have to approve it that we, when we're done with whatever product that we put on the site, that we're gonna draw down water and let it release into the natural drainage flows at the same rate that it is currently. So the state regulates that. They gotta approve all of our calculations and review everything before we can put that on the ground.
How will you handle any problems that's building, if this project is approved? Like I, once, once again, we are not the ones that approve. We only make recommendation of the project is, what, whether, whatever decision we make tonight, if it goes to the town council is approved, how will, how will you help or insur, ensure like the residents that are most impacted, the ones who shared today about the stormwater going into their property, how will you make sure that you're being a good neighbor to your, you know, the existing residents that's there?
And the state will have inspectors that will monitor, you know, all the way from when we first break ground and start clearing to our final build out to make sure that we're staying within all the calculations and flows that we have already submitted engineering plans for. If we de, deviate from those plans, then we're in violation.
Yeah, I could, yeah.
So then we have to make erosion control measures to either get back into compliance, but in terms of, I mean, off-site flooding from other drainage courses upstream from us, um, I mean, there's nothing we can really do to monitor or change that, cause it's off-site, it's not our property.
Well, I, I understand, I totally understand you can't do things that's outside of your control.
Sure.
But when you're building, things happen. Lots of rain, water comes, especially when you start digging the grounds. So, um, the water has to go somewhere and especially, especially since you're building so close to some people's property line.
Right, and so when we do construction, our erosion control basins are generally larger than what our final, um, basins are gonna be, just because the ground is opened up, therefore, when water hits that, it's gonna accelerate and gather faster. So our erosion control measures take into account, provide extra silt fencing, um, and we just go through a number of different studies and calculations and design that secures all that water staying on site. Now, there are, of course, especially in tremendously strong rain events, there is, things happen. I mean, it does, again, might break, but...
Right.
I mean, we have inspectors that go out usually after major rain events and, and check projects that are under construction. These are usually the first calls, because that's where you're gonna have probably your, your initial failures. Reports are submitted and then those corrections are made in the field promptly.
Will you, um, contact residents if there's an issue or if there, will the residents be able to get in contact with you if something happens during the project that you might not be directly aware of in the beginning?
Um...
Okay, so they will be able to go, contact you if there's a problem, if something breaks? You know, cause stuff happens, I mean...
Or they can contact the town.
The town, okay, okay.
The state, I mean, the state is doing inspection all that, right, it's a notice of violation, the heartbeat, if our erosion control measures, um, somebody's...
Mm-hmm.
Can you get the microphone, bring it on here, please?
Um, but all, all that's regulated by the state and the purpose of these sediment basins is, like Mark was saying, we create more impervious space, so that water needs to go somewhere, but we can't just run it off-site any more volume than goes off of it the day we walk out there. So these ponds hold the water and slowly let it out. And the reason they call it a sediment basin is it holds it for an amount of time to try to get the sediment to settle out of it before the cleaner water comes off. Now, is it turbid water, which is just colored water probably, but it's not sediment. We're, we're doing a project at Lake Wiley right now and we have to, um, monitor the coves for sediment and turbidity readings and everything else there. So, you know, the state, uh, watches that very closely.
And a lot of times, if I, if I can interject, a lot of times, uh, the fact that something's being developed with a detention pond, it'll, a lot of times actually slow it down slower than it is naturally and so it's not flowing in as, as heavy, so.
I guess, um, another thing that was brought up was like preserving wildlife. What is, how, how will you replace, I know that there's a requirement that we have to replace, builders have to replace things with, um, new trees and things like that. Um, is there any plan for like any wildlife or anything that you will consider to help keep the integrity of Indian Trail the way it is?
so on the north part of our site, well, around the entire perimeter of site, there's a fifty-foot on the stirr buffer. On top of that, on the northern portion of the site, and Tim, if you could bring that plan up, I can kinda point it out, um, we have an existing wetlands complex that we're not, we're not crossing over in that area. So that whole area on the backside, which if you saw from the aerial, is also probably the most heavily wooded portion of the site, we're not gonna be proposing any land disturbance in there. So it's, we have about seven acres of land that we're not disturbing, other than the thirty in the assemblage.
So basically, you, you're trying, you're, you will be conserving green space to help?
Yes.
Keep it, mm. I mean, I know, I know that's part of the UDL, I know, but I was just wondering what your plans were.
The project that you heard about earlier, if I remember right, wasn't it nine acres? With ninety-three units? We've got thirty acres with only twice that many numbers. So we've got four times the property and only twice the units.
Board, if I may, my name's Dean Harrell. I am the applicant, so I guess I can speak without a sign up, since I'm part of the developer.
Sure.
I just wanna correct. Tommy's very passionate about these things, is a good Union County man and, and Mark's a great engineer, but I just wanna make sure everything's disclosed here and, and, and right. Um, I've lived here, as of Sunday, sixty years. Uh, my family came here a long time ago. Um, when I, when I grew up, Potter Road was a dirt road. We used to play in the middle of the road, but past that, um, we're, we're local developers. We're not, we're not a national, um, builder and we don't come in here and build and leave and look for the next, next one to do. We, we employ a lot of Union County people. We buy materials in Union County. We actually own part of a construction supply that, uh, most of the materials come from out of Monroe and, and taxed in Union County. So I was always taught to try to keep your taxes in this county and therefore it trickles down to the town. Uh, we've never done one project that we're, we're not proud of. Um, we, we built probably thousands of homes. Many people here probably don't know, they live in a, a home that, that either I or the family built. Um, the, the, I wanna correct one thing. The, the comment was made, these will be two fifty to three hundred. The average is two fifty. I just wanna make sure everybody understands that. And also, um, the, um, the project um, across the road from Venture was the old Pine Lake Mobile Home Park that my dad started in nineteen fifty-nine. And as my parents aged out and have now passed away, I phased the Pine Lake Mobile Home Park out and my dad built that. There were sixty-eight trailers there. And people told him he was crazy. Nobody would ever wanna move out that far in someplace called Indian Trail. Potter Road, um, we, we phased that out and, and mobile homes are gone from that site. Now, we've moved the mobile homes, except for one is still there on Venture Road. Um, we've tore down a dilapidated shack on that property on this project we're talking about. So we're, I view this part of Venture Road and Potter Road as the gateway, um, really for revitalization to start down Venture Road. This is gonna drive property values up. It's not gonna drive property values down. These are, these are very, uh, high-end, high-end finishes. Um, we're, we're, we're doing, uh, pickleball courts there to try to cater to the age targeted, not age restricted. Therefore, that's why we're offering, uh, units with masters down to attract, uh, the, some people of Indian Trail that wanna get out of that house and get into something that is no maintenance, low maintenance and things are taken care of and for them. Um, the, um, the project back over to the Pine Lake Mobile Home Park sometime around, I don't remember it being back as far as two thousand and four, but it could have been. It was, I, I know we mothballed that project when the construction depression hit in two thousand and eight. We just took it off the board. Um, that plan was approved at that time. It is now shaded in the, in the plan for it to be high density, but that, we're not even talking about that project now. That project is sitting there, it's mothballed. Uh, I know the people on Carmont Woods have a, I've talked to many of them, um, especially the trolls and, and we, we, when that comes up sometime in the future to this board and to the council, we can talk about what we're gonna do there at that time, but that's not on the table right now. We're trying to, to improve this piece of property and then try to start the revitalization going down Venture Road. There's several owners on Venture that have contacted me in the past years, wanna know if I would be interested in their properties and this is the start of that. Coming from, uh, South Potter Road, from Indian Trail Waxol, the traffic that goes down Potter Road through here just is extensively fast. I mean, they just fly through here. There's been several wrecks at the intersection of Venture and Potter. The only way to handle that is either gonna be a red light or a roundabout. And a roundabout seems to slow people down more than even, people can run a red light. And I guess people could run over the roundabout, but the roundabout here is exactly what it needs. And as Tommy mentioned, we're gonna skew that roundabout into our corners so it won't affect the people across the road. We're gonna actually eat up the land on our two corners to, um, to position that roundabout where when people come north and south on Potter Road have got to slow down for that roundabout and get in the traffic pattern. There's turn lanes to be added at Chestnut. I actually did the improvements. Um, the Vickery family and I actually did the improvements at the corner of Chestnut and Potter many years ago with the nice red lights with the arms hanging. We are actually developers at the corner over there at The Grove. We're finishing up a commercial building now. We're gonna continue building those pads out. This is sort of just an extension of that and I can tell you, at some point, Potter Road will become a three-lane road, probably from Old Charlotte Highway to Indian Trail Road. Sometime in the future, it's gonna happen. You can plan on there being a center turn lane from Charlotte Highway coming down Potter Road to Indian Trail Waxol. You can just, they're gonna do it in phases, but it's gonna probably happen. So, you know, it's just a typical migration of growth. It's gonna continue to move on out and push on out. I would just want you to consider, what is the product? Is it a quality product? It's not gonna become a slum because of the, of the prices that, that these things are gonna be on an average and it's gonna be an HOA to make sure and maintains and keeps up with these things. The, the little bit of retail here is thrown in there just for some community support, so you won't have to go all the way up to Austin Village. And, and you know, you're thinking things like dry cleaners, nail salons, hair salon, sandwich shop. It's not a big box deal. There are see-through glass buildings with some great architecture. It's nothing that's gonna be, um, it's gonna be very eye plea, uh, appeasing. Uh, it's just a, it's just a good product that we build there. So, um, I just thought I but, wanted to stand up, cause I wanna make sure everything's disclosed, that I know, um, the numbers, the, the project that was talked about across the road. If you have any questions for me, I'd be glad to answer.
Thank you. I mean, it sounds like it is a great project. I just think that is, you know, the location's a big concern. I mean, I hope you can respect that. I mean, it's, I mean, I would love to see something like this, but I just, I just, I'm just concerned about the location as well as my priority. I know you hate hearing it, but the impact of the schools, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm a parent and...
And I understand the schools and, and let me kinda explain to you about the schools. So the schools board, I was president of the Home Builders Association for two years and we actually went to the school board and offered to pay for construction plans for generic schools. Um, what's being built now is just the Taj Mahala schools and there's a cheaper way to build a school that is clean, is for education, is heated and cooled, is aesthetically looks good. South Carolina does it all the time. They use the same plan all the time. Our school board needs to get to the point that they're gonna have to build an affordable school that's made for education and not for aesthetic looks. They have many, many, many properties in inventory. The two I can think of is one on Cox Road in Weddington, a hundred acres there. The other one is out toward, uh, Hemby Bridge at Bent Creek area. There's a hundred acres there. And they have inventoried properties, but just like DOT, they're not gonna start that until they're pushed to do it. So with the capacity of these schools, that's gonna push them. It's gonna be a demand that they start something. The, the public demand's gonna require that. They're gonna, look, we're, we've got the monkey on our backs. We've got to break ground on another school. That's just the way it works. Same with DOT and Potter Road. Once they see these numbers and they're mandated, when they see these numbers and for safety purposes, they've got to do something to bring the roads up to standards. And it takes time. At least they've acquired the right of way, they've moved the power poles and that, that roundabout's gonna go in at, at Pleasant Plains and Potter. It's gonna be, it's gonna be brutal, cause we're gonna have to go down Chestnut to Matthews, Weddington. We're not gonna be able to use that intersection up there, so it's gonna be, and there's another roundabout, I believe, planned for Chestnut, Chestnut and Matthews, Weddington. So all that's coming, it's just a matter of, and then it, this is not gonna happen overnight. It'll, it'll be, you know, third quarter to first quarter of next year for this thing ever gets started. So it's, it's not like it happens overnight. It's a two and a half, three-year project and it trickles in instead of just dumping in.
Okay, I think that, unless we have any other questions?
No, it's up to you, cause I've been tabled, I'm sorry.
I have, I have less of a question and more of a statement. Um, just wanna say to you three gentlemen, certainly appreciate you, uh, taking time. I, I can tell you're passionate about this project and I know you probably put a lot of time and effort into that, uh, the same token. Um, I wanna apologize to all the people out here. Unfortunately, even though I don't live in your area, I am one of the people that caused traffic to, coming up and down your, and believe me, I, I, I understand that as well. Um, I think, I've served, uh, on the planning board of another jurisdiction within Union County and, and I, I see a pattern, you know, and a lot of the pattern within Union County is just the fact that we have a lot of growth. Um, our infrastructure can't keep up. Um, and, you know, we hear time and time again, you know, the rows of schools, you know, the, everything, and I am in no way, shape or form discounting what you guys are complaining about. I live in Indian Trail, just as my colleagues have said, we're volunteers, we're residents, we're your neighbors. Um, we're a recommending board. Uh, we recommend and then the town council actually makes the final decision. Um, despite me being a kind of a bigger guy, I have little to no appetite for our schools being overclogged, um, with just high attendance rates. Um, I understand what you're saying about the process. Um, again, in the other jurisdiction, it was the same thing. Uh, I had a lot of questions about schooling. Um, you know, I, I personally would recommend to, to everyone out there, um, you know, the DOT, the schools, um, those aren't necessarily things that the town has really any kind of, I mean, we can put input into it. Call your state representatives, talk to your county commissioners, you know, those are things, those are the avenues you should take to try to get those things expressed. It's not, not saying that we shouldn't pay attention to those things and take those things into consideration, but real change has to come from that side of it. Um, but, um, with that said, I, um, I, I, well, I guess I will just wait till our vote then. But, sorry, I just wanna make that statement, so I, I appreciate it.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, um, I wanna commend all three of you for coming up here and, and speaking. I mean, uh, Tommy, bless you so you could have slid it out the door and, and, but I mean, I commend you for coming up and, and explaining it and Dean.
I mean, uh, Tommy, bless you so, you could have slid out the door and, and, but I mean, I commend you for coming up and, and explaining it, and Dean, and Mark, I mean, you, you did a great job explaining what you're trying to do and, and to the public here. I've lived in Indian Trail way too many years too, but, uh, and I've seen a lot of growth, and everything's not gonna stay the same. I, I hate it, but I, and I don't, I don't like it where I'm at either, so. But, uh, and, and the road system and the schools, the road systems, DOT, and through my years of experience with DOT, they don't dip, build roads in anticipation of traffic, they build it because there's a need for it, like, like Dean said. And, um, and so, um, I think you've got a good product here and, and, you know, it's, the traffic's the big issue right there and, and that can slowly but surely be addressed, I'm sure, uh, with time, but again, thank you for your presentation.
Okay, uh, as we've all mentioned, uh, we're a recommending board and, uh, once we make our recommendation, our recommendation and our vote, then, uh, it will go to the town council. And, uh, the town council makes the final decision, they listen to what we have to say. And then they make up their mind, and you'll have an opportunity to go to the town council, which I recommend to everybody that has pro or con, go to, go to town council, let them know what you, what you feel and what you think and that sort of thing. And, uh, Tim, when will that meeting be for this project?
I think, uh, tentatively February 11th. Yeah, uh, like we mentioned on the other project, notices will go out again for that.
Okay, so everybody will know, uh, when, when it's coming back up again. Okay, so at this point, I guess we have a vote, correct?
Yeah, the, the first vote will be, uh, for the comprehensive plan amendment, and then second vote will be for the uh, actual conditional zoning, so comprehensive plan amendment is the first one.
Okay, okay, so we have a motion?
I make a motion, um, to deny the application for CPA 2019-0087. What was it, Tim, I'm sorry, the? Yeah.
CPA, uh, 2019-0087.
Correct.
For McLendon Place.
Yes.
Comprehensive plan amendment.
Comprehensive plan amendment, I, I make a motion to deny the application.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Okay, all in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed? Okay, it is four to one, denied.
Now for the conditional zoning, okay?
Yes.
Make a motion to deny the, um, application for CZ 2019-0087, um, conditional zoning. Did I finish that right?
Yes, conditional zoning case CZ 2019-0087.
Yeah, I make a motion to deny that application.
Okay, do we have a second?
A second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, left hand. Four to one.
Thank you.
Okay, it'll go before our town council and they'll make the final vote.
Thank you all for coming out, thank you. Next will be the planning report after we break up.
Yeah, let's wait a little bit.